According to my timer, it's five o'clock. So, good evening, everyone, and welcome to this annual general meeting of Devonport City Council. It is five o'clock on Monday, the 24th of October, and I welcome you all here. In accordance with section 2065, we will be beginning the agenda and working through as it sits. Council acknowledged and pays respects to the Tasmanian Aboriginal community as the traditional and original owners and continuing custodians of this land on which we meet. As I've said, I welcome you all here to this annual general meeting to, I guess, recap on 2021-22. And I remind all people that it is council's policy to record council meetings, including this AGM, in accordance with council's digital recording policy. The digital recording of this meeting will be made available to the public on council's website, and the meeting is also being livestreamed on council's YouTube channel. I might just check that everyone can hear me clearly. It seems to be a long way away, but hopefully you can all hear. Yes? No problems? Excellent. I will try to make sure that I'm as close to the microphone as I can be without yelling at you. So, thank you for letting me know, Mr. Gardham. Is that better? Okay, thank you. The annual general meeting will be conducted as far as practical in a manner similar to an ordinary council meeting and generally aligned with processes of the local government meeting procedures regs of 2015. All discussion is to be addressed through the chair, and motions must be submitted, as they have been already, by the advertised time, and motions must be moved and seconded before a debate can begin. Only one motion at a time will be before the chair, and only electors in the Devonport local government area are entitled to vote. A resolution will be passed by a majority of votes taken and taken by a show of hands. In speaking to a motion, each person may speak only once and for a maximum of three minutes. However, the mover of the motion has final right of reply. And a motion passed at this annual general meeting will be considered at the next available meeting of the council, which, of course, in this case, will be a new council inducted, I think, on the 10th of November, all things being equal. The process for questions without notice in general business will generally be in accordance with council's public question time policy. And those wishing to speak at the meeting are to come to the lectern and identify yourself by providing your name and address, and to limit your comments and questions to no more than three minutes per item. And I will remind you that I will not accept any personal reflection on any councillor, council employee, or any member of the public come to that, and/or any offensive expressions that might be voiced. These annual general meeting guidelines were endorsed by council at its ordinary council meeting in December 2020. Right, that's the formalities taken care of. Item one, our apologies. Are there any apologies from any member of the community for this annual general meeting? I have one from Ms. Lynne Johnson. Are there any other apologies? No? Item three is declarations of interest. Are there any declarations of interest on any item on the annual general meeting's agenda? No? Okay. Excuse me. Item three, item four... Hang on, I'm on the wrong agenda. Stay with the program, Annie. Item 3.1 is the confirmation of minutes. And again, I haven't got the right piece of paper. Now I'm right. It's a good thing we all know what's going on, isn't it? Item three, item 4.1 is the confirmation of minutes of the annual general meeting of the 8th of November 2021. Do I have a mover of those minutes, please?
You do, Mayor.
Oh, councillor Laycock, thank you. And councillor Murphy, thank you. Councillor Laycock, any comments?
Nothing further to add.
Councillor Murphy?
Me the procedural, ma'am.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Councillor Laycock to close?
Consider it closed.
I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye. I'll show your cards, that would be great, thank you. Are there any against the motion? Okay. And all the councillors, yes? All those in favour? Thank you. Item five is the presentation of our annual report, and I will ask the general manager to provide a brief overview.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Council's annual report for the 2122 financial year has been prepared in accordance with requirements under section 72 of the Local Government Act. It was made publicly available two weeks ago and can be found on council's webpage. Two submissions were received on the annual report, and responses have been included in the agenda tonight. The annual report is effectively council's report card for the year. It outlines council's performance against the budget, annual plan actions, and capital works programme, which were formally adopted prior to the start of the year. A full copy of council's financial statements and an unqualified audit opinion from the Tasmanian Audit Office are also provided as an attachment to the annual report. A read of the annual report will highlight that council's performance has again been strong, both financially and in the number of projects and initiatives that have been undertaken during the year. The financial result from ordinary activities was a $3.7 million surplus, being $3.2 million above the budgeted position. This pleasing outcome was achieved through increased revenue whilst still containing expenditure to within the original forecasts. Total debt was reduced, as planned, to $46.9 million, with the net worth of council increasing by $12.3 million to now total $617 million, highlighting the strong financial position of this council. After two years of disruption, 2022 saw the beginning of what is starting to feel like a level of normality. Council either organised or financially supported a whole range of sporting, cultural, and community events, which were enjoyed by our residents and are outlined in further detail within the annual report. Demand for the Paranapool Convention Centre continued to grow as it has year on year since opening in 2018. This trend is expected to continue with the recent opening of the newly, of the new privately funded Novotel Hotel, bringing further economic benefit to the city. This annual report and the annual general meeting is the last of the current council as the four-year term of the mayor and councillor comes to a close. This council has achieved a lot during its term, and I would like to thank each of our elected members for their commitment and dedication during this time, and wish those restanding all the best with the election results. I'd also like to especially recognise and honour three long-serving councillors who have chosen not to recontest their seats. Councillors Perry, Laycock, and yourself, Mayor, have been a constant during a period of great change for the city of Devonport. You have each been leaders in the community and around the council table, and have overseen change which will benefit generations to come. Unfortunately, few will fully understand the contribution and personal commitment and sacrifice you've each made, but you have every reason to be proud of your achievements. As we reflect on the year that has been, it's also appropriate to recognise the leadership that you, Mayor, provided during the days and weeks following the tragic event at Hillcrest Primary School. Thank you. From an operational perspective, the organisation has continued to develop and evolve over the last 12 months to ensure efficient and effective delivery of services to our community. Nowhere has this been more evident than in the ongoing digital transformation of our services and work practices. Rose, the first local government chatbot in Australia, went live during the year and to date has nearly, has had nearly 11,000 conversations, providing instant answers and assistance. We have great people working for council, and I'd like to record my thanks for the contribution they make in serving the Devonport community. Madam Mayor, I trust this provides a brief overview, and I commend to you council's annual report for 2122. Thank you.
Thank you, General Manager, and particularly thank you for your kind words, I appreciate it. There will be opportunity to ask questions or make comment during general business a bit towards the end of this meeting.
No, just submissions.
And then, so we'll move on to item six on the agenda, which is submissions and questions to the annual report, and we do need a mover and a seconder for those. Please. Councillor Jarman, thank you. Do I have a seconder? Councillor Murphy, thank you. Any comments, Councillor Jarman? Councillor Murphy? Anyone else need, want to make comments? No? I'll ask Councillor Jarman to close.
Consider it closed.
Thank you. I'll put the motion. If you could have a show of hands with your voting slip, that would be great. And I'll ask councillors to have a show of hands as well. It'll be the easiest way, I think, for Ms. Sertes to do her job. Thank you. Are there any against? Thank you. Motion is carried. Item seven, our motions on notice. And item 7.1 is a notice of motion from Mr. Velocot around acknowledgement of country. Mr. Velocot, I'm assuming you're going to move the motion. Do I have a seconder for Mr. Velocot's motion, please? Mr. Gardham, thank you. Mr. Velocot, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Bob Velocot, eleven o'clock, I place Devonport. Motion that we, the electors and ratepayers here present, request council's acknowledgement of country statement within each council ordinary meeting agenda.
Mr. Velocot, can I just ask you to speak a little bit more closely into the microphone? That would be fabulous, thank you.
Within each council ordinary meeting agenda. That is, council acknowledges and pays respects to the Tasmanian Aboriginal community as the traditional and original owners and continuing custodians of this land to be amended so as to include after custodians of this land the following words or similar. We also acknowledge their efforts, along with other citizens, past and present, in providing a city which we can all be proud and thank especially those who have and those who continue to serve in protecting us from tyranny and thus ensuring our freedoms and democratic rights are preserved. So, as in the future, the suggested agenda heading of the acknowledgement statement and content will be acknowledgement of country, citizens of our city, and those who served. The actual acknowledgement will be, council acknowledges and pays respects to the Tasmanian Aboriginal community as the, as the traditional and original owners and continuing custodians of this land. We also acknowledge their efforts, along with other citizens, past and present, in providing a city which we can all be proud and thank especially those who have and those who continue to serve in protecting us from the tyranny, from tyranny and thus ensuring our freedoms and democratic rights are preserved. My supporting statement is follows. It must be accepted that local government, being an inclusive part of our society and representative of all citizens, no matter what race or creed, should give credit where credit is due. The present acknowledgement of country statement is somewhat restrictive in only acknowledging about the original owners and custodians of this land, and it is considered recognition of other aspects of their contribution that have been made and being made to our society, not only by them but also others, and these should be incorporated into the statement. For instance, the Aboriginal community have and continue to have, along with others, contributed in general to our city and also served with distinction in times when our country and way of life has been under threat from outside forces. By including in the statement the suggested words, would indeed make the statement more inclusive. Rest assured, this motion has been moved with the best of intention, and I ask all people to support this motion. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Velocot. Mr. Gardham is the seconder of the motion.
I've seconded the motion to allow it to be debated. I'm not sure much of that's going to happen. And to hear the thoughts of others. Bob certainly put before us a motion that some may seek to make into a contentious matter. I think he's done it with a high degree of diplomacy and courage in putting it forward. The motion does not seek to diminish the current acknowledgement of country, but moreover seeks to include a small acknowledgement of the contribution by those who served in our Defence Forces, are serving, and will serve, to allow us all to be free to enjoy the benefits of this wonderful country that we all call home. The suggested addition equally applies to the contribution and sacrifices of the Tasmanian Aboriginal community. I was interested in what others might have to say, but they may not. That's all I'd like to say. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers for or against the motion? Councillor Milburn, first.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. First thing I'd like to ask the mover, Mr. Velocot, a question. Was there any consultation with Aboriginal elders for your motion?
No, this was my motion, and after due consideration, you can see I just didn't shoot from the hip on this one. And I thought it's, people had the opportunity by having it in as a notice of motion, it wasn't sprung on you or on them, and I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Mr. Velocot.
Thank you for the question.
I really believe that accepting a motion such as this, that we are perhaps taking a very big backward step in reconciliation, one that, that our government and elders and many people over a number of years have built to get to this point in time. I think that there is a huge respect for the traditional owners of this land that stems thousands and thousands of years as the Aboriginal culture and Indigenous culture in Australia is one of the oldest in the world, and we should respect that. And this is a very small token of our appreciation and a very small part in our story towards reconciling of what our British forefathers did about 230-odd years ago. I know that for me, that when we do have the reflection on country, that it is a time that I can pause and reflect for a couple of seconds at the beginning of any meeting towards what our Aboriginal elders have provided in that time and how far we have come through education, both as a community and within our schools, and perhaps education that I understand that, Mr. Velocot, you wouldn't have been privy to throughout your education. Even throughout my education, I know that I am teaching a lot more Aboriginal and Indigenous culture when I teach at school now. And I know that the younger generation coming through are coming through with a lot more respect towards our Indigenous cultures. So, I think that this is really important for our ongoing reconciliation, education, and recognising the ongoing generational trauma to which our Indigenous groups within Australia have. And I will not be voting for this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Milburn, councillor Perry?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I can half live with the motion, Mr. Velocot, through the chair, because I can see that it's a motion of inclusion. The only thing that I'm not comfortable with is two words, and that is from tyranny. I think tyranny is an overreach and a bit verbose for a local government acknowledgement of country. But if you were to take that out, I would be supportive of the motion. I think tyranny is just an overreach. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Hollister?
Yes, I won't be voting for it. This is not what's used in the state government or the federal government. It prolongs the acknowledgement to about twice its length, and my biggest complaint there is that when you go to us somewhere and there's two or three speakers, and more often than not that...
Just stick to the motion in front of you, Mr. Hollister, please.
I'm sticking to the motion. And the whole thing is a time thing. If you have three people speaking, they all do acknowledge this long, it will be considerably longer.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers? Anyone in the gallery? Anyone else? Councillor Ennis?
Thank you, through you, Mayor. Mr. Velocot, this is just for use within our council?
Mr. Ennis, Councillor Ennis, can I ask you to speak through the microphone so everyone can hear you?
Is this only through, with our council, Mr. Velocot? Or you're proposing wider?
It's, I can't move a motion that other people will do it. It's, I think if you read that there, it specifically says, in our own agenda. I'm not saying that has, so I'm not suggesting that it be done elsewhere. That's up to, we do live in a very free society, thank goodness, and that's up to whoever is making a speech or is attending a meeting or conducting a meeting. That's up to them. But I believe in our agenda, it would be a very, very good acknowledgement of those who have served, still served. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Did you have a question, have a comment, Councillor Ennis? You've asked a question.
I would say that the serving people are well acknowledged throughout the year on many occasions. And whilst I think that's really good, I don't think we need to do it every time we have a meeting at council.
Thank you. Councillor Murphy?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, it's, it's an interesting one, this particular motion, and I think councillor Perry has got it right. The use of the word tyranny sort of does allude to the fact that we are potentially exposed, whether it's tyranny of government or tyranny of outside forces or invaders. That's what it sort of appears to describe. So, I think, as councillor Milburn alluded to, and councillor Hollister, I think the acknowledgement of country is pretty much a standardised process that's now undertaken. And I think if we were to deviate from that and demonstrate something different, we really would be then opening up a can of worms for, you know, a further ongoing conversation. But more importantly, I think the, the lack of consultation with our Indigenous leaders on this particular point would be worthy of further consultation.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? In which case I'll ask Mr. Velocot to close the debate.
Madam Mayor, if I may, before I vote, I need to know whether the mover's prepared to take from tyranny out of the suggested motion. That will depend, that will...
Madam Mayor, if I could just clarify that, yes. So, it's got here to serve in protecting us from tyranny. Is that the word, the tyranny, they delete the word tyranny?
If you go from protecting us and thus ensuring. The two words from tyranny are removed?
Protecting, yeah, for...
It still makes sense.
Could I just clarify that and ask you? I'm talking about at the present stage in what's happening around the world, there's plenty of tyranny going on.
Mr. Velocot?
We do have aborigines...
Mr. Velocot, a yes or no answer to councillor Perry's question?
Will you leave it in there or remove it?
Is all I need, thank you. So, that's a no?
Reluctantly, yes, I will agree.
Right, thank you.
I would agree, but very, very reluctantly.
From tyranny comes out. Thank you.
Does the seconder agree with that change? So, the motion as it stands with the two words from tyranny in that change that Mr. Velocot has asked for have been removed from both places where I can see it in the second last line of each of those first two paragraphs. And now I'll ask you to close the debate, Mr. Velocot.
Yes, I'll just close it. It does, does confuse me that we don't acknowledge those who are still doing, are still protecting us from tyranny and for those who... Yes, I think I'll just leave it at that, Mayor.
In which case I will ask, close the debate. Ask for a show of hands, those for the motion, please. Raise your hands with your voting slip. One, two, three, four, five, six? One, two, three, four, five, six? I've got six, yep. And those against, please raise your hands with your voting slip. The motion is lost. Thank you. Mr. Velocot, you can keep the floor. You have item 7.2 motion.
Yes, Mayor. For my second notice of motion about the 50-year ratepayers' parking concessions will require a seconder.
The motion as it is, are you going to read it? Yes? Is there a seconder for that motion? Thank you, Mr. Jennings. Mr. Velocot?
My motion is that we, the electors and ratepayers here present, request council to the next appropriate meeting ensure the continuation of providing all ratepayers of 50 years or more with parking vouchers or concessions as provided to pensioners. My supporting argument is it is understood that the providing of concessions by council for parking for those who have paid rates for more than 50 years or more was to be trialled for 12 months. It is noted, because of the very low numbers of those who have applied for the concession and the subsequent minimal loss and revenue to council, there is no good reason why... reason why it should not be continued. I think that's about enough.
Thank you, Mr Velocot. Uh, Mr Janney is the second of the motion, did you wish to speak to the motion? Are there any other comments? Um, Councillor Jarman?
Thank you. Um, I'm certainly happy to support this motion.
Speak into your-
Sorry, I'm not loud enough? Wow.
That's better. First ever.
First ever. Uh, I'm very happy to support this motion, um, and I thank, uh, Mr Janney for, first of all, bringing that to our notice, um, the original time, and, um, uh, just confirmed with the general managers this afternoon that the trial has, um, certainly been operating, and we're very happy for that to, um, go ahead if that's, uh, gets up. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Councillor Jarman. Are there any other comments? In which case I'll ask councillor, uh, Mr Velocot to close the debate.
Consider it closed, Mayor, I think it's-
Thank you. I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hand with your voting slip. And those against do the same, please. Fifteen for, the motion is, um, passed. Item 7.3 is a notice of motion from Mr Velocot requesting representation to state government by council regarding the Paranaples Centre. Uh, Mr Velocot, I'm assuming you're moving the motion, and I will ask for a second, please. Is there a second to the motion? Mr Gardham, Mr Velocot, you have the floor.
Thank you. That because the Tasmanian state government has taken advantage of the council in regard to the sale of part of the Paranaples Centre at an estimated discount of some $6,600,000, the council make representation on behalf of the ratepayers to the state government to make good disstated amount or, or more for the strata title to that part of the building now in their possession. My supporting statement is, Devonport Council now has a debt of over 46 million, the majority of which can be attributed to the Living City project, that, project. At the time of the inception of the Living City, the state government gave much encouragement to the council, however, they were not willing to support the project while providing a loan via their Tascorp finance facility. They did, however, provide some 13 million in cash towards construction and transfer of the old library property to the council. Part of the smoke and mirrors deal was council would rent the state government part of the ground floor and first floor of the ground, grand, for the grand annual rental of a peppercorn lease. For reasons unknown, the state government decided to take ownership of the agreed area by obtaining a strata title to it. From available information and simple deduction, the government did not pay a fair price to council for that part of the Paranaples Centre, which they now have title. Details about the deal-
Mr, Mr Velocot, can we take the rest of your comment as read, as we all have a copy of the, um, annual report in front of us? And the agenda? Please?
Thank you.
Did you have any other comment?
That, well, the other, the, I, I just make a few comments, yes, yeah. Just remember, incidentally, the government presently has no qualms of expending some hundreds of millions of dollars on football stadiums, and yet we're expected for future generations of this, uh, s- s- uh, of this city to be paying off that particular debt. Um, I, I, I just might add, uh, it, which is in continu-, which is contained in this agenda, but I think it needs to be said that I have previously put forward this motion, but it was rejected, um, uh, but there has been no ref- re- uh, no, nothing coming forward from council to say that our calculation, or my calculations are incorrect, or, or they have countered it. So I just wonder why that has never occurred. So that is the reason why I'm putting it forward again. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr Velocot. Mr Gardham is the second of the motion.
Um, firstly, uh, I fully support Mr Velocot's motion and the accuracy of the values presented, uh, values that the council has not provided evidence to dispute. Uh, it's been offered before that the transfer of the old library site somehow balances the state government's contribution for its purchase of 43% of the Paranaples Centre. Now, this just doesn't stand scrutiny. The old library was transferred to council for a buck on the understanding an urgent need existed for it to be sold for a major retail development, and suggests pie in the sky at the time at best. Council was to be responsible for demolition estimated at half a million, or a more likely outcome, it will be sold at an undeveloped land valuation with the purchase responsible for demolition. I mean, who sells a developed site, uh, at land value if the purchase of demolished the building? Well, council did with the hotel site, and I suggest this would be the likely outcome again, in desperation to prop up the council's, uh, dream of a new northern recovery.
Mr Gardham, I'll ask you to stick to the motion, please.
I am, Madam Chair. The motion is, we should go to the council, I am making a point here, and it's been put to me before that the gift over there, and I'm getting to it, and I've already stated that, but that's next, as to why that doesn't stack up, uh, that it, uh, somehow balances the books. My understanding is that the old library asset value on the council books is over 6 million, um, the good luck song for anywhere near that price if it's not utilised as it is. The likely outcome, if using the waterfront hotel land sale as an example for comparison, is that the recoupment of that from up there will probably be about 1.4 maximum. But the hotel-
Mr Gardham?
Yes?
Mr Gardham, the motion is to ask the state government for, um, some information and to change, it's nothing to do with what you've been talking about, please stick to the motion.
Madam Chair, if I may, Madam Chair, the argument has been put, and if I hadn't a second to the motion, probably someone may have raised it, and it's been put, and it's been put on a number of times, when it was raised originally that we were shortchanged by some $7 million for what we sold, it was put to me that the library valued at 6 million somehow balanced the books. I'm making the point that that doesn't stack up. When, if eventually sold and if not already valued down, council will need to substantially write down the asset value, and along with that, the smoke and mirror state government contribution evaporates, leaving ratepayers still shortchanged. We're not going to recoup the shortchange out of that when it's sold eventually. Arguments used in the old library are just an attempt to justify the indefensible. I urge those present to support the motion and make this meeting's feelings known to the premier. And as I said, after all, he's busting to spend hundreds of millions of dollars on a stadium in Hobart. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr Gardham. Are there any other comments? Uh, Councillor Acoch?
Thank you, Mayor. Firstly, Mr Velocot, the information that you've put forward isn't factual, you're cherry picking, you're not telling the whole story. I can't believe that anyone would use words like, "he took us for a ride", "pulled a Swifty" and "diddled us" when speaking about a premier. You might pass it off by saying, "oh, well, it was tongue in cheek", but to me, it was downright respectful, disrespectful. It doesn't matter what side of politics you're on or you bat for, you must respect those that stand for higher office, that gain higher office, and I think, Bob, you do understand what it's like to stand, uh, for election. Now, apart from that, when Jeremy Rockliff was the deputy premier, he bought, uh, into the vision of what the Devonport Council was working on, and he's always been a great supporter of the Living City project because, like us, he could see the financial, social, and community benefits. And if you want just one example, have a look at the library and see how many people that visit there. Our vision and the premier's was correct. So to criticise the premier is nothing short of pathetic. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor Acoch. Are there any other comments? Councillor Hollister?
For the last four years, I've listened to figures and valuations that haven't been anywhere near what we've been given of by council's valuers, which are independent, and the same thing goes with all the different valuations that we've had, and I believe that the Living City was ten years, ten years in the making, and it's still got quite a few sections to go, so I'd refute the statements made.
Thank you, Councillor Hollister. Councillor Perry?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I, I too, um, take umbrage to, um, the, I guess, the value that's been placed on the library at the time, as at 1 July 2015, the library was valued at $5.3 million by the Order General with a, with an adjustment factor of 1.2 arriving at the $6.36 million value. And so that was transferred to council in conjunction with a 13-point, uh, 13.026 million in cash, so those in combination add up to 19.386 million dollars, uh, which is 42.5% of the cost. So Education owns 53% of the Paranaples Centre, some of which is shared space, as per the strata plan, to which staff contributed 42.5% of the cost, close enough to the amount that the author is chasing, the 6.6 million the author is chasing, um, considering that that, uh, the Department of Education have also graciously, graciously shared some of their space, gee, we might even be in front. This makes any rent discussion, which forms part of the motion moot, so that's the rent discussion, peppercorn, whatever, is moot. I also take offence, along with Councillor Acoch, to some of the cynical colloquialisms, mainly directed at the deputy premier of the day, now a premier, like, obviously a good slate of hand, good old Aussie lingo, let the people of Devonport down, part of the smoke and mirrors deal, he took us all for a ride, then pulled a Swifty. To be honest, they're quite damning accusations, I mean, I know you're trying to be half funny and half clever, but it just hasn't worked, hasn't hit the mark. What also is not considered is the overall, the overall thrust of the Living City and this, this building has become a destination. New space for groups like NDIS participants who are now experiencing social and community engagement and lifestyle improvements they could only dream of four years ago. This new building has made that possible. I could go on about the growth in residential and commercial stimulus that this building and the broader Living City project has brought to the city of Devonport, but you've heard it all before from me, so I won't bore you only to say that it's true. In closing, I urge all reasonable, reasonable people in the room to vote this Barry Crocker of a motion down, to use good old Aussie lingo. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Perry. Are there any other comments? Did you have a question, Mr Gardham?
No.
No?
No.
No, unless you've got a question. Mr Velocot, to close the debate, please.
Thank you, Mayor. It seems strange indeed that, uh, only until now, some other figures have come forward when there's been ample opportunity beforehand to put it. Yes, I suppose I, um, shouldn't have put it, he pulled a Swifty on council, um, however, it's, it appears that it's okay for your council to refer, council, a councillor, your, uh, councillor here, to refer to the code of conduct panelled as being a kangaroo court, uh, when, uh, is it judgment-
Mr Velocot-
-made against him.
Mr Velocot-
But I'm not allowed to say that the, the, insult the, the premier.
Mr Velocot, I will ask you to speak to the motion.
No, I'm trying to speak to the motion.
This is your last chance, thank you.
Thank you, I'll just add that to it. Okay. All I can say is that, um, or, or request that, um, the figures that, uh, Councillor Perry has pu- uh, given tonight could, could be provided to me in writing and point out exactly, uh, the, the, the situation. I've nothing further to add. Thank you.
Thank you. I will close the debate and ask all those in favour of the motion to please raise your hand with your voting slip. Four, thank you, and those against the motion, again, please raise your hand with your voting slip. Sixteen? Thank you. The motion is lost, 16 for, thank you. Um, Mr Velocot, your fourth motion, notice of motion, request formal details in the agenda, reclosed session items. Do I have a second of Mr Velocot's motion, please?
No.
No? In that case, I'm sorry, Mr Velocot, the motion lapses.
Thank you, Mayor.
Item 7.5 is a notice of motion from Mr Gardham, request for inclusion of public disclosure clauses in contracts and/or agreements. Um, Mr Gardham, I'm assuming you're moving the motion?
Yes.
Um, do I have a second of Mr Gardham's motion? Mr Velocot, thank you. And, Mr Gardham, we will take your supporting, um, documentation there as read, if that's all right with you, I'm happy for you to read the motion, and then add any other comments you might wish to make.
You want me to read, I'll, I'll read the motion-
If you're, if you want to read the motion, that's fine, but I would prefer you didn't read the supporting documentation, it's there in front of us.
Yeah, the supporting, the sporting, uh, uh, information, yeah, take that as read.
Thank you.
That's fine.
Appreciate that.
The motion is that we, the electors here present, request the incoming council to initiate a policy similar to that of the state government whereby legally binding clauses are written into contracts and/or agreements that will ensure council has at its sole discretion a right to make public disclosures or arrangements it commits to under contract, particularly where ratepayer cash and by, or borrowings, public money and/or generous benefits or concessions are afforded to private enterprises by council. That is the motion.
Thank you, and seconded by Mr Velocot, and you have the floor, Mr Gardham, if you wish to add anything else.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Unfortunately, the bold type emphasis within my supporting statements has been omitted, uh, from the agenda, so I'll just repeat some of those now. Council currently maintains the position of overwhelmingly not releasing details around arrangements it makes with private operators, which are predominantly approved in closed sessions. Many in relation, of those decisions are in relation to leasing council properties, including periods of waived or written off rentals and, or reduced rental amounts, or fully funded or subsidised fit-outs. The resulting secret arrangements foster suspicion in the community. It is a fair deal, if it's a fair deal to council, then there cannot be a problem in disclosing it, and arguably, council has a good governance obligation to disclose the use of public monies and benefits afforded to private businesses. The community, including other businesses, have a right to know where and how ratepayer funds are being allocated to private businesses by council. The consideration here is simple: should discretion to make disclosures about the expenditure of public funds, ratepayer dollars, reside solely with council, supposedly acting on behalf of the ratepayers, or the beneficiary acting on behalf of its own self-interest? It's very simple. It took three and a half years to procure a copy of the initial property or place head lease agreement through the Ombudsman's Office, to expose some, uh, questionable statements made in 2016, uh, such as the lease agreement guarantee-
Mr Gardham, stick to the motion, please.
Well, Madam Chair, it's the holding of information that is the reason that I'm putting this motion, and the reasons given, as I've set out in the support, is that council claims confidential, uh, commercial in confidence, privacy acts in the way, local government-
All of that is in, is in your supporting-
It's all in there, Madam Chair, and that's the reason this motion's coming forward. Now, the council has a fondness for secrecy, and this culture must change.
Mr Gardham, that's enough.
Okay. The proposal removes one obstacle to improving transparency and accountability, and it remains to be seen if our new councillors will vote, as they are entitled to do in closed session, to disclose more information around their decision-making when providing handouts to private businesses. While this motion, if passed, is not binding on council, it, it's simply an indication of how the people sitting in this room feel. of how the people sitting in this room feel about the importance of council transparency and accountability. That's what it will give an indication of. It's not binding on council, they don't have to consider it if it's passed anyway. If it's not supported, will our next council continue to condone the absurdity of a commercial beneficiary of ratepayer funding and other benefits being able to maintain the absolute right to veto disclosing what the public has provided to it? And leaving it open for council to offer benefit.
Mr Gardem, be very careful.
Yep, well, we've seen it, Madam Chair.
Mr Gardem, that's enough.
We've seen fit-outs beyond what, these are.
Mr Gardem.
We've seen benefits in excess of what the private sector would offer under the same terms.
Mr Gardem?
Yep.
That's enough. Your time's up, thank you. Mr Velocot is the second of the motion?
It's not really up to my time, Madam Chair. I've practised that.
You had more than your time, Mr Gardem. Mr Velocot, you have the floor.
Yes, Mayor, as you would well know, that I've been bringing up this subject for yonks, as the saying goes in good Aussie lingo again. Um, I would, I would just add, simply what we're asking is that the council, instead of selecting, I won't use the word cherry picking, from the Local Government Act, they simply follow the lead of the openness and transparency that applies in the state government when contracts are let. That is, they reserve the right of what they will disclose, whereas what's been happening here is that you, you passed that, that particular facility or not using it. And um we've had good example of what happened over yonder, I won't go into that too far, but boy oh boy, I reckon half the trouble over there was because of the lack of absolute transparency what was going on and misleading statements were given. And that was proved by the Auditor General.
Mr Velocot.
That was proved by the Auditor General. Thank you. So in, in, in closing my uh contribution to this debate, I'm just urging people to think very seriously about that, this particular motion. If you vote against it, well, of course, you're voting against more open and transparency.
Mr Velocot, thank you. Are there any speakers? Mr Mur, councillor Murphy?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, I would suggest to the mover of the motion that uh, as it is standard procedural process in um council making any decision or initiating any change to any policy, that it is traditionally brought to workshop first, um for the council to consider, ask questions, and um gather more information and do their research, and in, in, in an effort to ensure that it is making a decision um in the best interest. I understand um a lot of the issues in, that are driving this particular motion are historical. Um, you know, I'm, I'm quite confident that the, the change within the council over that period of time, um from where we were to where we are now is a little bit different, where we're probably not as exposed or not as engaged in entering into such agreements with private enterprise. Um, I think we've moved past that, but I'm, I'm more than confident that it's a lot more stringent than what it has been in the past, as has been highlighted, but the past is the past. So if the mover of the motion, where he has that the electors here present request the incoming council to initiate a policy, um I think it'd be more prudent if, if that was changed to um the incoming council to workshop uh this particular um suggestion that has been put forward in this motion.
Could I?
As a part of proper process.
Could I suggest councillor Murphy that that could be something that the, if it passed tonight, that the new council could do um in their own, at their own discretion?
Happy with that, Mayor?
Um, good suggestion, but I, they could make that choice. Councillor Hollister?
Our policies are controlled by the Local Government Act and they are law, and I believe that this council has followed those laws ever since I've been on council. Um, the fact that the Auditor General actually did say about property or place that we did nothing wrong, but they did say they probably need to change the Local Government Act to facilitate further discussion or further rules. But under the current law, we were right. Nothing further to add.
Thank you, councillor Hollister. Are there any other comments from anyone? Councillor John?
Thank you. Um, I, I certainly understand uh the reason why Mr Gardem has brought up this.
Please speak.
Motion, sorry. And. Yeah, sorry. I have no doubt um the reasons for this motion at all. But I find it very hard for this current council to make a decision for an incoming council who haven't been elected yet. Uh, it's about to happen, we know that. Uh, I certainly kind of agree with councillor Murphy's idea that perhaps we could just say that, could we take it to a workshop for that incoming council? For them to have the decision to workshop it themselves? We don't know who those people are going to be yet, um so I'm just wondering if that would be something that could be considered, I certainly agree with that, um and happy to take it further. I believe in openness and transparency, but not at the risk of stopping people thinking that they could come and speak to us and come to us with proposals that need to be, first of all, discussed behind closed doors to start with. I'm not saying then that all the deals should be done behind closed doors, and I certainly think going forward, we've learnt our mistakes from the past, and I'm hoping that that, with the new council, if we had the opportunity to workshop this actual motion, some of the historical facts could come through, they could get an idea of where we've been and where we're going. I would like to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments, questions? I'll ask Mr Gardem to close the debate, please. Sorry?
Right, um, yeah, I'd have, I would have no objection to that being workshop, but leave it as it is. Um, I think we're going to run away from this one probably when it goes to the vote, but anyway. Um, the idea that council policies are all dictated by the, the Local Government Act, I find uh very confusing. Um, I don't believe there's any need to change the act to change council's approach to doing business. It's very common with government and government departments that they will want to make disclosures if they're forced to under right to information. Now, the act does stipulate in certain disclosures that you have to ask the party to the other contract, which is exactly what council's been doing on a couple of things that, one, I've got an RTI before and it's been asked. We were told that about over here with the head leasee. They were asked if they could disclose how much was given to each of the tenants for the fit-outs, or how much was, funding was put for each of the fit-outs, and the tenants didn't agree and the head leasee didn't agree. Now, the change is, and then, and for those that might have read my supporting statements, I made the point, this is not about every time someone comes to council to talk to them about some project or something they've got going, council has to run out and tell the world, that's just not practical and it won't happen. It's about, and to comply with the act, if you have to get, under the Privacy Act, to get permission to release something, all this says is, instead of doing it after the event, when everyone's asking questions and you keep telling the community, we can't tell you because of uh privacy or the beneficiary who won't tell us, um you do it up front and you still comply with the act, and that's a, that's a condition of dealing with council. If you want the work with a government department, if you want the benefits of public money, it's like the government giving out grants to businesses and the businesses reserve the right to say, we don't want anyone to know we got seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant. The government won't give it to you, and it's just putting it up front instead of up the back, and it, it allows council the option. Doesn't mean you've got to, or that you have to, but it means the control is in there. Now, it's a myth that no one will deal with this. Um, and I, as I said, I didn't ask the negotiations and every time someone talks to you, you go out and you tell the advocate or everybody. It's about the final deal, the final arrangement, and council should reserve the right to that. It happens elsewhere, it's time councils caught up and had the right to disclose. Maybe council doesn't want to have that, maybe council wants to keep that one.
Mr Gardem, I'm winding you up.
Closing up, Madam Chair. In closing, I'll simply restate, and this is the simple question about what you vote for or against. Should the discretion to make a clause about expenditure of public money funds, particularly when benefiting private businesses reside solely with council, supposedly acting on behalf of us ratepayers?
Mr Gardem, be very careful.
Or reside with the beneficiary to decide whether they want it released or not. I ask all the tenders to vote for this motion if you value transparency.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
I'll close the debate and ask all those in favour of the motion, please raise your hands with your voting slips, please. Five, uh and those against uh same, please raise your hands with your voting slips. Fif, fifteen. Uh, the motion is lost, five to fifteen. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen, for those uh motions that have been brought forward. Um, and as has already been stated, the ones that have been passed will be discussed at the first meeting of the next uh incoming council. Um, that brings us to an item of general business, an opportunity for anyone to make comment, um and I will ask you to keep it succinct, um and also to ask any questions perhaps of the general manager you may have in relation to his report, um to our report for the two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two year. Mr Jenny, and I'll again remind you to um state your name and address, please, before asking your question or making your comment.
My name's Douglas Jenny, twenty-three Watkinson Street, Debenhams. I'm a ratepayer. Further to my discussion with you, Mayor, about the layout of this meeting, in the two positions I've sat, there are three councillors whose faces I don't see. The AGM is not a normal council meeting. It is a presentation by you councillors of the previous year's happenings, and as such, you should be facing the ratepayers. You're not. Next year, it needs to be a lot better and not set up for what is a normal council meeting. Thank you for that. Now, questions? I go to the annual report, twenty-one, twenty-two, page fourteen. Workers' compensation for the year is shown as just under a hundred and eighty thousand. Why so high when the previous year was just under thirty-six thousand?
Through you, Madam Mayor, that includes seven claims, one of which is still open. So there's a, typically the insurer makes a fairly conservative estimate on what that might be, um, but yeah, noting that it's, it's not the highest over the last four years, but it is, it is second highest.
Thank you. Next question, page forty-four. Waste collection has increased from two dollars fifty to two dollars seventy-nine per week per property. This is an increase of eleven point six percent. Why is the increase so high?
Take that on notice, Madam Mayor?
No, uh, Mayor, this is the AGM, answer it at the AGM or get somebody who can answer it and we'll just wait until you get them.
Mr Jenny, we want to make sure that your answers are complete and they will be taken on notice and you will be replied in writing.
No, no, me, questions at the AGM, and that's fairly simple, should be answered by council officers. I don't accept what Mr.
I accept what you're saying, however, you've, the answer will be provided in writing and at the next council meeting it will be as part of our agenda.
Yeah, through you, Mayor. I might add too that um the annual report was made publicly available two weeks ago and calls were made for questions and submissions, and those that have been provided have been given written answers which are in the agenda. However, we, the, the difference in the, the cost is, you know, it's a component would be fuel, a component would be tip fees, but I would prefer to provide that answer in detail in writing. Thanks.
Thank you.
Where was it asked for questions to be put before the meeting?
In the notice of meeting? In the notice of meeting that was publicly advertised, Mr Jenny? Did you have any more questions?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Questions, next question, why is the lost time frequency rate so far away from the target? Working health, work health and safety at the bottom, page forty-four.
Okay.
Yeah, through you, Mayor. Our target is always to have zero uh health and safety incidents, and that will always remain our target. However, we um, each year, uh we continue to, to get closer to that target, but having that aim of, of zero uh accidents or incidents for our employees is always what we strive for.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Jenny. Are there any other questions, comments? Mr Velocot?
Yes, uh, I get my name again, Bob Velocot, Eleven Cocker Place, Debenhams, a ratepayer. Um, now, I refer to my questions on notice and the responses for they, these, for this evening's AGM. I specifically asked that the questions and answers be included in the agenda because I believe they should be of interest and for the edification of all ratepayers, and especially for all existing councillors and candidates standing for council. Unfortunately, they, they, the questions and answers, were not provided in the actual agenda but hidden, hidden in separate attachments on the website, thus making it, I apply, little difficult to assess for those not conversant with the intricacies of council's methods of responding to questions and or providing information. One of the questions, Mayor, was, was in regards to the debt, and so my comments and questions is in regard to the questions one on notice about the debt of some forty-six point nine million and the time of paying off that amount and the general manager's response, which was in part, the timeframe to pay off the debt will depend on future council decisions to increase repay or refinance debt. The financial strategy states that where possible, council will assess the term of the debt in relation to the life of the asset. The use of the debt in this manner attempts to address the issue of intergenerational equity. I take that, that's for future generations. And council's current long-term financial plan forecasts total debt in two thousand and thirty-two to be thirty-two point eight million. It appears that the rate the debt is being paid off, it could be forty years or more, maybe, who knows how much, a hundred years, perhaps if interest soar. So I refer now to um in the, Mr, the answer given to Mr Malkard in return.
Mr Velocot, all of those answers are available to everyone who has a copy of the agenda, and I understand everyone has that available to them. Did you have further questions?
The, the further question is that on page eighteen of my um questions, the, the figure of thirty-two point eight million was given for the debt in two thousand and thirty-two, and yet the projected debt when, from Mr Gardem was told was thirty-five point eight five million. So therefore, my question is, the projected forecast total debt is. So therefore, my question is, the projected forecast total debt is either thirty-two point eight million or thirty-five point eight five million, a difference of three point zero five million. I'm just wondering which one do I take notice of, the one that's sent to me?
Point is taken. We will take that on notice and confirm.
Well, just quickly, if the general manager looks at page eighteen and twenty-five.
Thank you. We will check that through and we will reply in writing. Thank you. Did you have any further questions, Mister Velocot?
The question now is to, in regards to the attachments and questions, the questions on notice, and correct me if I'm wrong, no, you will. At ordinary meetings, the answers to question on notice are in the main agenda. Yet for this meeting, they're on attachments.
I'll take that as comment and.
No, the question is, please, please, the question is, will you please put them in like that? So that people don't have to, when they're on the website, go from one thing to the other when they want to look up anything. It's a simple and polite request I ask.
Thank you, Mister Velocot. We'll take that as a question, as a request. Are there any other comments from anyone?
Should have talked to Mister Velocot. I think he's asked a couple about the questions and answers being in the in the actual body of the agenda rather than being in the.
We've covered that, Mister Gardam. Did you want to move on?
Yes, Madam Chair. In response to my question, can I just clarify, Madam Chair, we have three minutes for each item?
You have three minutes at the podium, Mister Gardam.
For each item.
You have three minutes at the podium, Mister Gardam.
The guideline says limit comments, questions to no more than three minutes per item, Madam Chair.
In that case, I will consider that as you, depending how long you take, get started.
Per item, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
In response to my question, three, see on notice at the back of the online attachment. Is council currently kicking debt down the road to ensure an annual budget surplus while servicing interest is costing rate payers a right hundred thousand per annum? And will increase going forward. And while denying it was kicking debt down the road, the council response included, council will assess the term of the debt in relation to the life of the asset. The use of debt in this matter, and this is it, attempts to address the issue of intergenerational equality. Now, I've long said that Living City created intergenerational debt. So will council just explain how drawing out the payment timeframe to well in excess of twenty years, with thirty-five point eight five million still projected to be owing ten years from now, on the premise of intergenerational equality, is not intentionally kicking the debt down the road for current and future generations to pay? It seems by the, council's own statement, that it's looking to prolong it so that it can pay equitably by future generations without thought that the sooner you part, the sooner, you don't have to part. And so we're asking to push it forward, so future generations can pay.
I think you've pretty much answered your own question, Mister Gardam, but I will ask if the general manager wants to make any comment. Thank you, Mister Gardam. You've asked a question. I'm allowing it to be answered.
Yeah, through you, Mayor. Those responses, I guess, should be read in their entirety. I think that one of the key points is there that we're saying council has a ten-year financial plan and its projections at the moment are over that ten-year period. It's not possible to predict out to twenty forty-one and what the council of the day may do beyond that twenty thirty-two period. At this point, there's been some assumptions made over that period. Council has a number of, has its debt structured in a number of ways and there's a number of points when different fixed loans become repayable or expire. And at that point, there'll be decisions for the council of the day. And they'll make those decisions looking at cash flow requirements and interest rates and as they do, as council does now, and continue to make the decisions that are in the best financial interests of the organisation. And that doesn't necessarily mean eliminate all debt. It may be more prudent to look at other initiatives.
I just found that the jargon, intergenerational equality.
Mister Gardam, did you have another question?
Yes, Madam Chair. We've mentioned the monthly ordinary meeting agenda is not included, are all included with the the body of the meeting agenda is there. Now, the AGM meeting guideline states submissions and questions related to the annual report were submitted in writing for inclusion in the agenda. And the agenda is provisioned for those at item six. The guidelines also state that motions that will be included in the agenda, and that happens.
Mister Gardam, I think we've acknowledged that there are improvements to be made. Did you have something else?
Take that on board as to why.
I've acknowledged, Mister Velocot.
Yep.
Yeah, through you, Mayor. Just further to add to that, the difference between, so questions that are in the, an ordinary council meeting agenda are provided by way of a recommendation for the council to accept or not accept. And following the council meeting, they're then turned into a letter and provided to the person who asked the question. The difference with the AGM is these questions are, sorry, these submissions and questions about the annual report have, replies have been provided currently. So they're not being provided to the meeting for approval or such. They've already been sent and they're simply provided as attachments to the agenda for noting of those present here at the meeting. So there's a distinct difference between the two. In regard to providing things as attachments to the agenda, we see them as, attachments are part of the agenda. That's.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying, but the letters are already in the attachment and I can't see why it can't all be in the agenda.
Thank you, Mister Gardam. Can we move on?
Think we're skirting a bit. And I've just got one here about the attachments and why the attachments aren't part of the handout with the agenda. It's understandable that monthly ordinary meeting attachments to the agendas are not provided as handouts, often running to hundreds of pages. The current one's three hundred and sixty odd pages, I think, for tonight. However, the current AGM agenda is twenty-six pages. And the the agenda sixteen and the attachments are twenty-six pages. It's that big, right? If you wanted to produce this for people as a handout, it's forty-two pages. Yet we get the agenda sixteen pages is the handout and the rest of it's online, go search and find it yourself, which contains the questions and answers, which is information for people.
Mister Gardam, I think the point has been well made. Thank you.
So really, that's it. Why can't we actually put the agenda that out together?
The point has been made and taken on board.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. Look, I'll just refer to the Code of Conduct Panel Determination, which is in the attachment five, one of the next ordinary meeting.
No, you won't. Thank you. Not in this meeting. You may in the next.
The question relates to the issues we've had for three years about council having an appropriate set of guidelines so we all understand the rules of the meeting.
You referred to an item in the general meeting agenda and I'm not going to accept that comment in this meeting. Thank you. You will have the opportunity in the next meeting, should you wish to do so.
It is directly relevant to council guidelines for the annual general meeting, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mister Gardam. I've made a ruling. Are there any other comments, questions? In that case, I will bring the annual general meeting to a close at six seventeen. I thank you all for your attendance. We will have a couple of minutes break and move into the general meeting. Those members of the gallery who are here are certainly welcome to continue to stay or to go, whichever you would choose to do. Thank you all for your attendance and we'll have a couple of minutes and we will reconvene. Thank you, everyone. It is six twenty-three and this is the October council meeting, general council meeting for Debenhams City Council. All persons in attendance are advised that it's council policy to record council meetings in accordance with council's digital recording policy. And the digital recording on this meeting will be made available to the public on council's website for a minimum period of six months. The meeting is also being livestreamed on council's YouTube channel. Council acknowledge and pays respects to the Tasmanian Aboriginal community as the traditional and original owners and continuing custodians of this land. Item one is apologies and we have a full complement of councillors on board. Item two is declarations of interest and I would ask if there are any declarations of interest in any item on the open part of this agenda. councillor Murphy? Uh, can you pop here?
It was on. Thank you, Mayor. You do in item four point one. Just bear with me two seconds. So I am engaged by related parties to the application on a professional basis. I will be leaving the room. And also, agenda item four point three, I am known to the proponent and have been engaged by them in my professional role. I also will be leaving the room.
Thank you, councillor Murphy. Are there any other declarations of interest? Councillor Alexio?
Yes, Madam Mayor, item four point one. As a supermarket owner myself, I'll be sitting out of that.
Thank you. Are there any other declarations of interest in any item on this agenda? I will be declaring an interest in item five point one and leaving the room during that debate and asking Deputy Mayor Jarman to take the chair. Thank you. Item three point one is confirmation of minutes. Can I have a mover for the confirmation of minutes?
No move. Second.
Of the September meeting. Thank you, councillor Perry and councillor Murphy. Any comments, councillor Perry?
Nearly procedural, Mayor. Thank you.
Councillor Murphy?
I agree with councillor Perry.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Councillor Perry to close.
Consider it closed.
I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item three point two is public question time and item three point two point one has responses to questions raised at prior meetings and there is a recommendation, be it pleased. Do I have councillor here? Murphy, thank you, and councillor Lakecock. Councillor Murphy?
Yet again, Mayor, just procedural.
Councillor Lakecock?
Nothing to add.
Thank you. Any comments, questions? I'll ask councillor Murphy to close.
Consider it closed.
I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye. Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item three point two point two is questions on notice from the public and we haven't had any questions on notice for this meeting. Item three point two point three is questions without notice from the public. An opportunity for members of the gallery to come to the microphone, ask any questions they may have. First stating your name and address, please.
Thank you. Douglas Jenny, twenty-three Watkinson Street, Debenhams. The old library, the facade is looking very weary. When is the council going to freshen it up?
Thank you, Mister Jenny.
Yes, through you, Mayor. There's no immediate plans to do any refresh, but obviously something council would consider each year as part of the budget process.
Very poor for supposed Living City.
Thank you, Mister Jenny. Are there any other comments, questions? Questions? Sorry.
Out of Gardam, they might drive my data. Council recently advertised for expressions of interest in the purchase of two existing car park sites in the grass area west of the former library in Fenton Way. Has council ever publicly sought expressions of interest in the purchase of the former library site? And if so, when was it?
Thank you, Mister Gardam.
Sorry, Mayor, I just misheard part of it. Has council ever sought expression of interest in the library?
Yeah. Has council ever publicly sought expressions of interest in the purchase of the former library site? And if so, when was it?
No, they, we haven't. We did seek, council did seek expressions of interest for a small parcel of land on the north-west corner of the library building, but not for the building itself. itself.
I didn't, yeah, I didn't, I didn't think so from memory. Look, with reference to the advocate article, free TSO concert coup, 21st of October. Will council confirm if the orchestra will play from the waterfront park amphitheatre or the $700,000 rotunda?
I'm sorry, would you repeat that, Mr Garden?
Oh, sorry. Is this, is things going, everything?
Yes, it is, but just look into it, thank you.
The, the TSO concert that was in the paper the other day, that we've got, TSO concert coup. Will council confirm if the orchestra will play from the waterfront park amphitheatre or the $700,000 rotunda? Are they going to be in the rotunda or are they going to be positioned up on the amphitheatre? For, it's in the park, it was set in the waterfront park.
At this stage, the plan is to use most of the park.
Planning to use the park.
It's still work.
Okay, I understand that. Look, with reference to the same article stating an expectation of some 5,010 Ds, is council expecting to have to close the, the section of Formby Road between Best and Old Acre Streets to facilitate the TSO event?
That would be my understanding, Mr Garden. That's always been the plan as part of the waterfront precinct.
Shut Formby Road every time we get a big event then. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Well, not every time, but it's an option we've had right from the beginning. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Mr Velocott?
Bob Velocott, 11 Cocker Place, for the record. Mayor, my question is in relation to the condition of the property on the corner of Best and Rook Street, commonly known as Days Building. It appears we could have another old maternity hospital within our city, that is, the condition, a pretty poor condition, not in keeping with the rest of, of the properties around. Last time I had a look at it, there was broken windows, some had plywood on it, there was pigeons flying in and out, and of course with the recent weather coming that way, not, not much of imagination to say there'd be plenty of moisture and what have you inside. I have been told that there has been liquid, liquid coming down on the interior of that building. Now, my question is, does it comply with health, health and building regulations? The other thing is, is that, am I correct in saying that council now has the authority to do something about it? Get, if the builder won't, sorry, if the present owner doesn't. Also, who is now, who is the present owners? If, does council know? And why haven't they taken it, or have you taken any action so far in having that building brought to a reasonable and acceptable standard to comply? And I emphasise, to comply particularly with the health regulations. Thank you.
Mr Velocott, given the number of questions you've asked there, I'll take it on notice and, and reply in writing. Thank you. There were several questions there and I don't want to miss anything, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from any member of the gallery? In that case, we will move on to, item 3.3 is questions on notice from councillors and there are no questions in that category. Item 3.4 are notices of motion and again, there are no notices of motion tabled for this meeting. Item four is planning authority matters. And I now announce that council intends to act as a planning authority under the Land Use Planning and Approvals Act of 1993 for the consideration of agenda items 4.1, 4.2 and 4.3. Council is required by Regulation 8.3 of the Local Government Meeting Procedures Regulations of 2015 to deal with items as a planning authority under loop at 1993 in a sequential manner. And these items are to be dealt with at this meeting in council's capacity as a planning authority. Item 4.1, and I note that councillor Murphy and councillor Alexio have declared an interest and are leaving the room for this item on the agenda. Item 4.1, AM 2022.02 and PA 2022.0092 is 15 Friends Street and 88 and 90 to 102 Stony Rise Road development.
So moved.
Second.
Councillor Perry, councillor Jarman, thank you. Councillor Perry?
Thanks, Mayor. Well, this is, this is quite a detailed report, as those that have read it would know, some 580 pages, eight, four pages. Because I guess, there's, there's a lot to it. There's, there's a complexity about it for sure, but at the end of the day, it can be best described in our conclusion. The goal is, the proposed development will facilitate a neighbourhood centre with a large supermarket and essential retail or businesses whilst avoiding a degradation of the intent of the original homemaker centre. And that's very important, Madam Mayor. The removal of the Devonport Homemaker Service Industrial Centre specific area plan from the Devonport local planning provisions will reduce potential land use conflict between residential land, which now abuts the site. I think that, that paragraph pretty much sums up the intent of the amendment that we, we plan to certify and send off to the Tasmanian planning scheme. We've had a workshop on this. I think we understand, we understand where, where this needs to go, or where the proponent wants it to go. And we've, we've all been fairly clear on that. So tonight's our opportunity to either support that or not support it. I support it because I support the intent of it all and the benefits it will give, will bring to the city of Devonport and particularly, I guess, southern outlet, those suburbs heading to the south of Devonport. There's not much else I need to say. It's all in the report, apart from what I've said. And I look forward to hearing what other councils have to say. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Perry. Councillor Jarman, this is the second of the motion.
Thank you, Mayor. I certainly would like to say that we couldn't have a more open and transparent amount of reading to do for ourselves as well as the general public. It's certainly been open to them so that they can have a look at this development and see exactly what it's going to be and how much careful planning has been put into it. I certainly think that there will be concerns coming from the public and some of those, I hope that we can ease their minds. And we certainly understand that there'll be people concerned about traffic flow. That's certainly going to be something that we need to work on going into the future with this development. And I know that the proponents certainly are aware of that too. And it wouldn't just be for this new development. We've already, you know, had understanding that during Christmas time, it can be very busy up at the homemaker centre. What a shame. It's such, such a shame we've got something so successful. But we are aware that there are traffic jams that do go on in certain times of business trading. And we certainly are going to be proposing to look at speaking to not only these new business people, but also the Harvey Norman people as well, to make sure that we can help them and see if we can do something about the traffic flow. It's certainly something very heavy on my mind with the fact that we're making the area so busy. And we are certainly aware of that. Certainly want to ease the mind too of people that say, oh, we're fragmenting. That's a famous old word. It's not at all. What we're doing is we're bringing business to the region. All we're doing is enabling, all we're doing is hoping that people will see how successful this is and more people want to come to the area, let alone to Tasmania. So I say bring it on. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Jarman, are there any other speakers to the motion? Councillor Lakehock?
Thank you, Mayor. Just quickly, I do remember quite a few years ago, a lot of people out there saying the homemaker centre would, wouldn't, won't work, won't work. And my philosophy was, they'll come, they'll do the homemaker centre, they'll move around the city. And there's been a lot of retailers have spoken in favour of this, that this is what's happening when they talk to people. So I feel the new development there will only be, I think as councillor Perry has just said, very beneficial to the city. It's got conditions to it. It's still got a long way to go, but I do congratulate the proponents for putting this forward. And I do hope that in the near future, it gets legs and we see it built up there on the site. Thank you.
Holston?
Yes, this is the next section in the development up here. I think this, there's only one block left to be developed. Hopefully it'll be one of the missing retailers that we, Devonport has not got at this stage. So I fully support the development.
Thank you councillor Ennis.
Thank you. I, I, I think the, that the whole concept is going to be a big benefit to the city. I like the, I too have concerns about the traffic. If we can do something about that as going forward, but the overall amenity of providing a supermarket, et cetera, in, in that part of the city will only be a benefit for everyone.
Thank you. I'll ask councillor Perry to close. Thank you.
Thanks, Madam Mayor, and thank you other councillors for your contribution. Just in relation to traffic flow, I think there'll be smart enough minds to, to configure, configure or work out those issues. And to be frank, a bustling city like we are becoming are always going to have traffic flow issues. It's about mitigating those and making them achievable and livable for the people that use the area or go past the area, go by the area. I have been privy to, to see the, the development from this proponent at the Glebe, suburb of Hobart, towards the latter stages of that development. And it really did, once it really did take shape and I think it was open not that long ago, probably a couple of months now, it really is a magnificent looking complex from the highway. And if we get anything similar to that, it's fantastic news for Devonport. We are a growing city. To have a development like this, for us to be on the cusp of this, along with everything else that's going on, just almost brings tears to my eyes because Devonport really is going places. Of course, I won't be on the new council to be part of the opening, but if I'm part of getting it there or the process in getting it there, then I'll be happy with that. And it's another feather in the cap of Devonport and what we can offer big scale developers and developments. And I look forward to the motion being successful. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Perry. I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Ms Sirtis, would you ask? Thank you. Councillor Murphy and councillor Alexio back in the room? Thank you, gentlemen. Moving on to item 4.2, AM 2022.03 and PA 2022.0100, rezoning of agricultural zone to rural living zone at 130 Tugger Road and a subdivision. There's a recommendation there before us. Do I have a mover, please?
So moved.
Thank you for coming.
So moved.
Thank you.
Councillor Jarman? Thank you. Councillor Murphy. Councillor Jarman?
Thank you, Mayor. So, being Tugger Road, we pretty understand that there's been a lot of development going on there. We've certainly have made sure that it's been done in certain sections. We've now come to this part of it. There's a seven lot subdivision being proposed. It certainly makes sense for me to agree that this is something that needs to be done. We need to make the changes. I am aware that obviously there is a certain amount of foliage that will be removed in one section, but there is then a need be then for some planting to be done. I'm very grateful that that has been recommended. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Murphy?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I think the work that's been done in the residential growth strategy highlights exactly how important these types of developments, once they're brought to council, that they are supported. Obviously, the demand's there. People want to live here. And this is just another extension of that.
Thank you. Councillor Holstone?
Yes, this is a further, further development in the Tugger Road area. And it's these sort of developments that help keep our rates down. The more development there is in the city, it makes it more simple for council to be able to hold rates down to lower levels than otherwise would be the case. So I'm fully supportive of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? I'll ask councillor Jarman to close the debate.
Let's consider it closed.
I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please say aye. Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item 4.3, PA 2022.0155, noting that councillor Murphy has declared an interest in this item as well. So it's the 14 to 18 and 20 Fraser Street, Sprayton, nine lot subdivision. Do I have a mover for the motion, please?
So moved.
Councillor Perry, thank you. A second. And councillor Alexio. Councillor Perry?
Again, thank you, Mayor. It's a, quite a detailed report. It makes perfect sense. I don't really need to add much more than that. Thank you. I know, I, I do know there is one representation, but I think that's been answered adequately. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Alexio?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, there's a, there's a few stipulations on, on that property there, but it's all in the report. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Questions? I'll ask councillor Perry to close the debate, please.
Consider it closed.
I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please say aye. Are there any against? Motion is carried unanimously. And I'll invite councillor Murphy to return to the chamber. And ask councillor Jarman if she will take the chair, please.
So I need to go to the hundred. Thank you. So item 5.1, Code of Conduct Determination Report, Mr Garden versus councillor Rockcliffe. If I can have a mover, thank you. Councillor Murphy, and a seconder. Councillor Ennis, thank you. Councillor Murphy, if you'd like to.
That's only merely for noting.
Thank you. Councillor Ennis?
Nothing further.
Thank you. Any other further comment? Councillor Perry?
Thanks, Madam Chair, not me, Madam Chair. I note again that in the report, I have no opinion on the report or the, the decision that's been made, but I note again, in accordance with section 28 ZD1, a code of conduct panel is to make every endeavour to investigate and determine a code of conduct complaint within 90 days of the chairperson's determination that the complaint is to be investigated. Well, this is once again gone over 90 days. It's almost, it's almost standard now that the code of conduct complaints do go over that. And it's another reason why the...
Councillor Holstone, may you, could you turn yours off for the moment and I'll come to you? I'm sorry. Let's see if that helps.
Well, the code of conduct framework needs much more rigor. And I think there's an investigation going on, but, but it's one of those kick down the, kick the can down the road reviews. We, we need to get serious with it for everyone's benefit. And the panel again has been disappointing. Thank you.
Thanks councillor Perry. Councillor Holstone?
It's just that this code of conduct review is underway at the moment. It's probably still 12 to 18 months away before it's, the government decides what they're going to do with it. So the sooner they fix it, the better. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment from the councillors? No. Let's ask councillor Murphy to close the debate.
Consider it closed.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? So carried. Thank you. If the mayor can come back to the room, would be... Thank you for organising that. I'll leave.
Thank you councillor Jarman. Item 5.2 is the annual financial report. Item 5.2 is the annual financial report. A mover please. councillor Murphy? And a second. Councillor Milburn, thank you. Councillor Murphy?
Thanks, Mayor. I think it's all there for all to see and it's such a positive result. If you look at most other councils within the state, we're in the enviable position of having a surplus. And I think a lot of that is attributed to the executive and our general manager and Ms Peebles and her fantastic skills, which will be sadly missed in relation to preparing that report. The fact that we ended up in the position that we did demonstrates council's capacity to cut from its own cloth when it's required. I'm the same too, and I'm back. And just being prudent. So, well done. It's a fantastic effort. And yes, congratulations.
Thank you councillor Murphy. Councillor Milburn is the second of the motion?
Well said councillor Murphy. If nothing more to add, other than it's an excellent position for the council to be in.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Councillor Perry?
Thanks, Mayor. Look, I'd like to reiterate councillor Murphy and councillor Milburn's statements. The report itself is a really good document, goes to the heart of what we do in a reader-friendly way. And of course, the work that goes into providing the numbers in the report or achieving the numbers in the report has to be acknowledged and sheeded back to our general manager and his executive management and right down through the whole organisation. Congratulations to them. I've never been involved with a better organisation than this one. And I've been involved in a few from top to bottom. So full credit to them and absolute commendation to the group that we are in this position. And long may it continue. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Perry. Are there any other comments, questions?
I'll ask councillor Murphy to close the debate.
Thank you, Mayor, and to the previous speakers. And I'd just like to reiterate that, that Ms Peebles, it's been an absolute pleasure. The level of professionalism that you've demonstrated in the four years that I've been on council and the advice and the guidance which you provided to the organisation through the audit committee. And, you know, the evidence and the proof is in the pudding. You will be sadly missed. But I believe that you're more than confident in the capabilities of the people that you're leaving behind. And to the GM, again, it's just a fantastic result. And as I stated earlier, we are very fortunate to be in the position that we are. Consider it closed.
Thank you. I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item six is information. Item 6.1 is the mayor's monthly report. Do I have a mover, please? Councillor Murphy and councillor Jarman. Councillor Murphy? Oh, apologies. Councillor Murphy?
Yes, Mayor, you've been busy as per normal. I could only imagine the feeling that you would have at this particular point in time. And I think we're very fortunate that we've had a mayor as committed to the role as what you have been over the past four years since I've been here and the two years prior to that. So I could only imagine the sense of feeling that you have at this particular point in time. And on behalf of myself and other new members of council, I believe councillor Jarman will probably have some words to say as well. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Jarman?
I wasn't going to say anything councillor Murphy. Now, of course I am. Yes, so thank you for that report, Mayor. And I certainly would like to thank you for the 11 years that I've had the pleasure of working with you. And I certainly think people don't realise how much time is spent, especially in the mayor's role. And you've been doing that not only just for the four years, you were certainly acting mayor as well. It's a long time to be away from family and friends and all the different things that you turn up to. I don't know if people realise the amount of hours that have been spent turning up to every single AGM, any opening of a hall, any opening of a bottle, literally.
Making me sound like a social butterfly.
No, well, you have to be. And it's expected. And I know there are not many times that I've been called upon to take your place because of how much work you put in. So I'd like to thank you for that. It's not an easy job. And I think you just need to know that you're leaving Devonport City Council in a very good position. And I'll be watching every cent afterwards, don't you worry, if I'm still here. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments, questions? councillor Lakecock?
Thank you, Mayor. Another busy month. We always seem to say that. But I think the role of the mayor and the general manager, it's always going to be very busy. And I'd like to reiterate what councillor Jarman has just said. Because unless you've been in the seat, you don't realise how busy it is and the time that you give up. So I'd just like to extend my best to you for the future. And I think you were saying recently on radio, on radio has been time to take a breath when you're asked what you're going to do next. So you've got time there, you've got a beautiful granddaughter and family that you'll be able to pick back a little bit. But thank you for everything you've done. It's been a pleasure working with you, Annette.
Thank you, Lyn. councillor Hollister?
Yes, I concur with the other speakers, previous speakers. I can say that you have had to put up with a lot more than I ever had to when I was mayor. And I congratulate you on your control of very difficult meetings for the last four years that I've been here. Thank you.
Thank you. I feel like I'm listening to my eulogy. Thank you, everyone. I appreciate your comments. councillor Perry?
Thanks, Mayor. Look, I'd like to reiterate everyone else's comments and commend you. Disappointed you couldn't quite get onto a second page with your list of events this time round. So you're clearly taking your foot off the pedal, which is, and you need to be held to account for that. No, in all seriousness, Mayor, it's probably the last four years hasn't been as enjoyable as it could and should have been. There've been some times when you've been exposed to stress that you should not have been. And during that period, you showed leadership that, that not all of us have seen before. And I commend you on that. You did inspire us and you stayed the course and you remain composed. Which is credit to you to remain composed under consistent fire. So congratulations on that. You've been a wonderful mayor and I hope the next ones are almost as good. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your kind words. Again, as I said, it feels like I'm listening to my eulogy, but that's okay. I'll take it. Thank you. I appreciate those kind words. Councillor Murphy to close?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, thank you. Consider it closed.
I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye. Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item 6.2 is the general manager's report for the month. Do I have a mover, please?
So moved.
Councillor Jarman and councillor Murphy? Thank you. councillor Jarman?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, it's always interesting to see what goes on behind the scenes and the different things that the general manager's been attending as well. I always do value this report, so it certainly gives the general public an opportunity to see what goes on and all the things that have to be done. And I thank the general manager and also for coming out of Covid so well. And his executive have done a wonderful job. And I also will take this moment to thank Ms Peebles as well. How dare you leave us? But I do understand and I think it's been an amazing time for us to learn so much from you. And I thank you genuinely. And I'm not going to get upset, but how dare you leave us? But I know that I've learnt so much from you and I appreciate that. And I know how much the executive appreciated you being there. And I certainly would like to pass on my acknowledgement very quickly. If I may, Mayor, please bear with me, but to councillor Lakecock and councillor Perry too. They've both put their hand up to retire and it's incredible. The 11 years I've had the privilege of working with both of them has been incredible. They've been mentors, they've been adversaries. Certainly times we don't always agree, but my word, we walk out that door and we're still friends. And I've always appreciated that. And I think a lot of people could take note of that. We can have robust discussions, we can have arguments in the most polite way. But we always really do respect each other and I really have appreciated their time here. So I do thank them very, very much. And I thank the general manager for putting up with me as well. Thank you.
Councillor Murphy?
Yes, well, I can reiterate all of what councillor Jarman has said. And again, to councillor Alexio, unfortunately, who won't be with us for the next four years. Councillor Milburn, who also is not recontesting. So, but again, to lose the experience that we are, yes, I wholeheartedly agree. But the GM obviously has been busy too, so it's all about him in this report, but anyway. But we just might mention a few others if he's happy with that. But again, thank you to all of those.
Thank you. Are there any other comments, questions?
Yes, Mayor, thank you.
councillor Lakecock?
I did pick some pieces out of the recommendation, but I think I might just leave them. Because if you've read that, you understand all that. I just wanted to say to the general manager, very special congratulations. Firstly, with the opening of the Nova Till Hotel, Matthew. The Living City project was your baby from the beginning and you must be extremely proud. And I don't think people realise the amount of work it is to run a council, to appease and work with councillors. You've got the most fabulous executive leadership team. And then to have a project like Living City to work with others there, it is just a huge job. You took over the reins at a very difficult time when we lost our other general manager. But I knew you would and you've proved to a lot of nosers that have been in the public gallery that you could do the job and you've exceeded. As I said, you've got a great leadership team, you've got very professional staff. It's made it very easy to work with everybody over the last, well, I'd say 20 years, but over the last few years in particular. And Matthew, with you as general manager, our city will fulfil its full potential. I know that and I'll be watching and having a look and coming along. But Devonport, there was a motion that I put up many years ago and we're nearly there to become the retail hub of the North West Coast. And I also believe we can become the leading city, not just of the North West Coast, but the North with everything that's going on in Devonport. So Matthew, thanks for a busy month, but also thanks for being our general manager. I don't think we could have anybody better steering our ship in the right direction. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you councillor Lakecock. councillor Alexio?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I fully support what councillor Lakecock was just mentioning there about the general manager. I do note, as a retailer in our store for 36 years, we manage quite a fair few issues and things that happen in our business. But looking at the general manager's role, you know, look at 1.1, I think, yeah, internal staff and management meetings, they can be pretty difficult. And I imagine all the other jobs that he has listed there, he covers quite a fair bit. So congratulations, Matthew. I'll definitely miss the councillors and the council meetings that I attend. But hopefully you won't see the last of me and you see me around. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll ask councillor Jarman to close the debate.
Consider it closed. Thank you.
I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye. Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item 6.3 is the infrastructure and works report for the last two months. Do I have a mover, please? Councillor Murphy? Second. Councillor Alexio, thank you. councillor Murphy?
It's all there in a very detailed report, Mayor.
Thank you. councillor Alexio?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Now, a good report there by Mr Williams.
Thank you. councillor Ennis?
Thank you. I'm really pleased to see the Horsehead Creek toilet sort of being well progressed. That'll be a very popular spot in that area, no doubt. And it's pleasing to see that we're working on accessibility, improving it in our city and up at the aquatic centre. But there's a, we've got a bit more to go in that space.
Thank you. councillor Lakecock?
Thank you, Mayor. Just as a parting thought, I'd hate to think that, I know you wouldn't in council, forget about planting trees. Please plant lots of trees. And as the shadow minister for garbage bins, I would like just to mention to everybody, please don't put garbage bins next to seats. I've seen this in the past and it's been a little pet hate of mine. And our streetscapes and that are looking fantastic. So just be, please be really mindful of that. But on that note, that's all good. Thank you.
councillor Murphy to close?
Consider it closed.
I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item 6.4 is the development and health services report for the last two months. councillor Murphy and councillor Perry. councillor Murphy?
Yet again, a very detailed report, Mayor.
Thank you. councillor Perry?
Agree with councillor Murphy, Mayor. And also congratulations to Kylie for being elevated to the executive leadership team. Well done. It's on the back of a lot of hard work and a lot of good decisions. So congratulations and all the best with it.
Thank you. Are there any other comments, questions? I'll ask councillor Murphy to close the debate.
Consider it closed.
Thank you. I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item seven is section 23 committees and we have had no committee meetings since the last council meeting. And with that brings us to the close of the open part of this agenda. Do I have a motion to move into closed session? councillor Murphy, thank you, and councillor Lakecock? Any comment councillor?
Me the procedural, Mayor.
councillor Lakecock?
Nothing to add.
I will put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye. Are there any against? Motion is carried unanimously. So that brings the open section of this agenda to a close at 7.05. I thank all of you in the public gallery for sticking it out. Thank you, everyone.